Open up, go ahead.
We're recording.
Okay, I'm going to open up council time for Wednesday, March the 31st, 2021. Begin with old business and that was first item under all businesses approving minutes of our March 24th meeting.
I so move.
Can I give a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item 1.2, under all business, the HB 1406 funding request.
Good morning, councils. So I know that we have Vanessa on the phone and she's going to be able to speak more in detail, but I will at least open up the discussion about this. So the legislature enacted House Bill 1406 and the council imposed the sales tax, which is credited against the state sales tax for purposes of affordable housing. And affordable housing under 1406 is somewhat broad. It doesn't have to be, for example, specifically homeless shelters. It can be a variety of different low income and affordable housing. So there's a number of options that the council has considered for use of these funds. And to date, the council has not issued an appropriation plan. So it's my understanding that there is about $600,000 sitting in the treasury account just waiting to be allocated for this purpose. And the Vancouver Housing Authority has requested a pass through of these funds so that the funds could be used for a variety of affordable housing programs. So this is the letter that Vanessa received and I'll turn it over to Vanessa to take it from there if she's available.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Vanessa.
Thank you. Apologize, I'm not able to, technical difficulties, can't get onto the computer. So, so yeah, so we have been doing some research for a while on the requirements on this funding. I know Lindsay has, we had some meetings jointly with the city of Vancouver and I think they have a, their own process for their funds. So we, these funds have been sitting there and like Lindsay mentioned, there's 600,000. We have been able to sort through with the special, special thanks to the auditors office about, were we able to get some indirects or admin from these funds? Because there was some different interpretation from the Department of Commerce, so that has been resolved. So Mark Gathaway and them have decided to put those funds, working with Kathleen, into our department. We have a plan to figure out how to distribute the funding and that would be to follow the same process with our urban county policy board for our community development block grant and home fund, because we just don't have the staff to create an additional process. With COVID happening, we were not able to kind of put that in play because other priorities have come up. So at this point, we have received a request from the housing authority, the letter you have received, that they are actually requesting for a pass through instead of putting them through an RFP process. And I was going to suggest that for this year anyway, so we can get the funds out there. But they're actually asking and requesting that the funds be a pass through each year for affordable housing projects that they are working on in the unincorporated area and the small cities that are not already collecting the revenue themselves. So, and that's, that's kind of what we wanted to present today. I don't know if you wanted to know more about the process for the urban county policy board. Michael is ready to speak to that, but that's kind of the, the particular issue that has come right now for you guys to discuss.
Vanessa, I think I'd like to hear a little bit more about that policy board. And I would, and I would ask the question of you and your group. Is this recommendation by Vancouver Housing Authority, does it, is this something you would recommend as well? Or would you rather do, even though this may be good for one year, as you had just, you know, temporarily, at least for the one year, do you believe this is a good ongoing way to distribute these funds?
So let, let me have Michael speak to the urban county policy board. And then I can answer your question about whether this is, is a good process for the urban county policy board or to do pass through to housing authority. So Michael, can you just do a quick overview of how the urban county policy board operates?
Absolutely. Good morning, council, councillors, Chair, County Manager, Michael Torres at Clark County Community Services. So the urban county policy board is the entity that currently, is the advisory board that currently oversees the home investment partnership funds and the community development block grant funds, the federal funds that come in for low income neighborhood infrastructure, sidewalks, street repair, community, community centers, things like that, and for the preservation and maintenance of affordable housing. It, what we would do, and currently it is chaired by councillor Olson. It is always chaired by a councillor. You, you rotate through councillor Lenz is the alternate. And the other members of the urban county policy board are the elected representatives of all the cities other than the city of Vancouver. Because the city of Vancouver receives its own allocation of community, of community development block grant and home investment partnership funds. So the process that we would use for these funds is identical to the process that we would use with the allocation and distribution of home and CDBG funds currently. In fact, what we would do is we would take these funds, which are, you know, 1406 are meant for affordable housing, and we would put them in the same request for application where we solicit the proposals for the home investment partnership funds, which have the same purpose. You know, and the reason we would do that is because that is an established method that we have to announce funding opportunities to the community, to solicit competitive proposals, to score and evaluate them and distribute the funds. This is a process that gets audited on an almost annual basis. It is a process that already has, you know, a structure around it that involves a direct council oversight and participation. And you would be receiving the decision recommendations from the urban county policy boards in your meetings. You would be, it would be included in our action plan proposals each year. It would be included in the yearly report of what's been going on with the home and CDBG funds when we come to you every year and we discuss the, you know, the annual performance report of what's happened in the previous year. So we solicit those proposals via RFPs in October of each year and those proposals are due in December. And councillor Olson just went through the process. We, the urban county policy board reviews and scores each proposals. The funding allocations are based, based on how each proposal scores against each other. And we go based on the funding that's available from the top scoring proposal down. And this year, you know, we just, we just went through the 14, I mean, the, the, the home and CDBG allocation. It's given all the other funding issues that we've been coming to you and talking about. We probably don't have the capacity to incorporate the 1406 into the home and CDBG funds as, as soon as this October's allocation and funding requests. But it would be very feasible to do moving forward. So that's our process. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Madam Chair, I had a follow on question.
I have a couple too, go ahead.
Okay, I'll defer to the chair. Oh.
No, you go ahead.
So is there, I'd like to get these funds out and it sounds like we don't have a mechanism this year. But Michael, what do you see as the possibilities if we were to basically bank it? And then come up next year when we are ready and we have a process in place and we've got the RFPs out, how much more flexibility would it give us if we bank that money for just this one year until we are able to process our own requests?
So councillor, thank you for the question. And it, the flexibility it would give us is the total amount available for preservation and maintenance of affordable housing would be higher. We don't control what gets proposed or when we solicit that from the community. So, you know, so in that sense, it doesn't give us more flexibility in that, like by banking three years' worth of 1406 funds, which I think, like, that's one approach that I have heard. I don't know if they're going to do that, but that's one thing the city of Vancouver is planning, has talked about planning to do at, at different moments. It's like, well, if you bank it for a couple of years, they might be able to invest it in a single project that they're doing. We don't, we are a funder, we're not a developer. We're, so, so we don't know, you know, bigger projects, long term, would we be able to spend all those funds on a single thing? Like that kind of flexibility, we don't really have. We're, you know, we really are at the mercy of what is the capacity of our local developers and their willingness to take on these public funds, which is not always, you know, it's not always a given that we will receive all the proposals we would hope to receive in, in a single year. You know, one, one, and I, you know, I'll let Vanessa speak in terms of what department recommendation would be. But, you know, I think what I see in the letter by the VHA, in that sense, you know, the VHA does plan and they know years in advance what projects they're planning to invest in and where. And, and, you know, they have a fairly good idea of what their fiscal needs are. So, you know, that is something to consider as you think of these alternative approaches.
So that, that's interesting that Vancouver is considering banking it and not providing it to the Vancouver Housing Authority and the Vancouver Housing Authority is coming to the county for our funds. Anyway, just an interesting point.
Well, councillor, I wouldn't, I would probably say Roy probably has approached the city as well because he has projects in the city. He's just looking at the projects that are in the unincorporated area and the small cities that did not collect their funding. So he, Roy probably has approached the city.
Yes, I, and, and I noticed that's what this letter consists of, is that those things in unincorporated Clark County as well as the smaller cities. My question was, has the urban policy board, advise, urban county policy board met this year? Was it just a meeting recently? Because we haven't had a report yet.
Yes, the urban county policy board has met each month through April virtually. And I'd have to, I'm sorry, I don't have in my notes when our, our last report to you as a council staff coming in and telling you what, what our last year's proposals going up. We will be coming up to you in the next couple of months with the funding recommendations by the urban county policy board for program year 2021 and 2022. So that is still coming. That usually happens around May is when we come to you and report on what their funding recommendations are for your approval and what we're planning to do over the next year.
Okay, councillor Olson, have you made these meetings? I'm just curious because we haven't had a report from you.
Yes, I make meetings.
Okay, so there have been three meetings anyway, right, if it's monthly?
Right, they met in January, February and March. Actually, we've, we've had meetings since October. Usually the, there's a pause in meetings between the request for applications and, you know, after recommendations for funding are made, there's usually a pause in the meetings until there's a need to meet again. So it'll be like September, October that it starts up. But, so they've met on a monthly basis from October through last month.
Okay, and then the other question, you said that this board does audits. Who audits you?
So it's not the urban county policy board that audits the program. It's usually the state auditor's office and the, the county's own auditor's office. So it, it's the home and, and, and every periodically, every couple of years, the local department of the housing and urban development program office will also come and do onsite monitorings of this program.
Other questions of the council? Thank you, Michael.
So councillor, Chair O'Brien, so just to give you a little bit about, so we have not, the funds have been accumulating while we've been trying to figure out, can we get the indirects on it, which has been resolved? So if you want to, if the money wants to, if we need to spend it this year, I do recommend that you do a pass through to the housing authority. That's the simplest way. Since we will not be able to do an RFP this year, we'll have to be next October. So to, because they have projects online right now that they're ready to go for, for affordable housing. So I do recommend if you want the money to be spent, this through, to a pass through for this year. I would say the pros and the cons of giving the pass through for the housing authorities. So the pros are, they are the largest developer and manage and own of affordable housing for low income populations in our county. They work very closely with the nonprofit developers who build affordable housing for low income populations, which is Columbia Nonprofit Housing, we have REACH. We also have the For Profit, which is the housing initiative that spun off from the council for the homeless. Michael, is, am I missing anybody else? I know there was Second Step Housing. Is there anyone else, Michael, for the developers?
Yeah, REACH sometimes participates as well as a developer. And Proud Ground does not develop per se, but they do often receive funds that go to homeownership of people who are 80% or below of area median.
So, so they tend to be the, the backbone for those nonprofits who are building affordable housing for the populations that are lower income. And so they are, they, they have a lot of experience in that. They use these funds to leverage other funding sources. And so, and Roy mentions that in his letter. So they will go after the housing trust fund, their low income tax credits. They will do various sources of funding because they know how to work with public funds around affordable housing. So they will be able to leverage that in a way that we could actually, they could actually bring in more dollars to do that affordable housing. He has a list of projects already that he's doing, so it's already, it's not like he's trying to create. He's, he's got work already in the pipeline. He's always looking at purchasing land to build as well, is not just do the housing vouchers, but actually develop and build affordable housing in our community and looking at across the county as well. So he's ready, prepared, I mean, they're ready and prepared to do that. I would actually recommend that you just don't give the funding to them, that he would have to come up to the county council every year and report out what he's done with the funding, what projects he's worked on and what's in the pipeline for next year, so that you would always have an annual report. He's willing to take on a lot of the reporting that the commerce wants to see with these funds because there is some reports that have to be done and submitted up to the state. So he's willing to do that with these funds and help us report up to the state for them and make sure that everything is in compliance. He also, the housing authority also gets audited, so he's used to being audited for the different type of programs. So that piece there would be taken care of around that piece there. So that is some of the, the, the pros of, of working directly with the housing authority if you want to pass through these every year. You know, I don't know how large the amount of funding is. You know, we're usually with Michael's funding, there's sometimes, you know, millions of dollars he's putting out. Sometimes, you know, depending on, it might be, you know, about five, 600,000. So, you know, I know in the beginning when we first started, it was about 400,000 to up to 600,000. So we're not talking about a huge amount of funding here, but it is good to put it, make sure that we get it out in the community around it. The cons are, is if you don't do an RFP, you don't, you know, some of the other nonprofits may want to come in themselves. Housing Initiative may want to come in themselves and get some of the funds. They will miss out on that opportunity competitive if they're not working directly with the housing authority. So that's the piece around of, of not using the RFP process is giving the opportunity for competitiveness around it. If we do the RFP, my staff will have to take on the reporting piece that's required with that and that's Michael and Sam Whitley. They will have to work with that to make sure that's all done and get it up to commerce, which would be in that part of, that's why we need to build it into the urban county policy board because that's an additional workload that they will have to take on and submit it up. So that's right now kind of where, where we're at with, with these funds. And do you have any particular questions about, it's really whether you guys want to have, people have competitive, competitiveness around these funds after this year.
Question.
Okay, thank you councillor Bowerman.
Vanessa, you alluded to the duration of the giving of the funds as a pass through as well. I noted in his letter, he comments on how $400,000 for 20 years. 20 years is a long time. What duration are you thinking would be right?
So Michael, what is the covenant that we usually ask for affordable housing? Sometimes it's 20 years, sometimes it's 30 years. It's depending on the funding source for affordable housing.
It's generally speaking, it depends on how much funding we put in and it goes between five years for minimal amounts of funding and 20 years. That's, that's, when Vanessa's talking about the covenant, those are the restrictions on the property that is developed to keep it an affordable housing. And Vanessa, is that the question you were asking?
Yeah, yeah. And we tend to do required the longer term so we can keep it affordable. And most of the developers we work with, that is permission. So their purpose is to keep it affordable, so.
Okay, um, other questions?
Madam Chair.
Okay, is that councillor Lenz?
Sorry, I can't see, okay. Um, I have a question that councillor Bowerman, I think may have been a little bit of the question you were asking. Perhaps not, but with regard to the 20 years, would there be an ideal amount of time for the commitment, not for the housing to remain affordable, but for the, the, the funding to be passed through? So for example, Roy used the, the example of the 100,000 a year for the CAMUS project. Would, in order for him to leverage that to its maximum ability, would that need to be a 20-year commitment for $100,000? Or would a five-year commitment allow him to get that leverage? For example, or, or some, some combination thereof?
Michael, I don't know if you could answer. I'm not sure because, I mean, I think that's a question for Roy Johnson on how he would set up his financing, because it would also depend on what other financing that he has in play for those projects.
Correct. I, and I, I would say ultimately Roy Johnson would have the, would be the authority to answer that. And it would really vary on a case by case basis with the projects because some cases take years of financing to, you know, to develop, you know, in terms of just like the layering of the funding sources and the investments to have what you need to develop an affordable housing property, especially with, when low income housing tax credits are involved. So, so knowing several years ahead of time that you're, that you're going to have this funding stream, I could see it being extremely helpful for the housing authority to be able to tell the state and to be, or the federal government or investors, you know, just knowing what funding they have to count on in those investments. In other cases, it might be a much simpler project, you know, so like some of the stuff that he has in his listing is, is rehab and maintenance kind of activities, in which case he doesn't need that, that long a notice. So I think it would vary from project to project.
Thank you. Related question, if we were to go to RFP with these funds, is it practical and/or possible for an RFP to include that ability to get an annual commitment for the funds? So that say, a different provider were to come and say they have a large project, they'd like to use these funds, they'd like to be able to leverage them in this way and that would require a commitment for this many years. Is that something that is plausible in the RFP structure?
It's, I, plausible in the sense that, yes, you could structure multi-year RFPs. It, it certainly is not how we, how we are set up to do things right now. Because when we, when you create multiple year RFPs like that, it also creates a burden for you to follow through on those years, you know, administratively and making sure they're following through with that proposal. So the structure we've intended to incorporate these funds in would be an annual request for applications.
Thank you.
No, I think, Michael, what you, that's, I think councillor, are you asking, like, if somebody, like, let's say we do RP last, next year and you have a proposal coming in and saying, hey, I'd like to do this project, but I'm requesting, I need like 100,000 for the next three years commitment so that I can compete, whatever, whatever they need it for. So are you, are you saying that in there and that you're asking, can we approve such a request that comes in for that proposal? Is that your question?
Yes, and I, I guess I'm just, I'm trying to get at the way we can, you know, get the most money out of this money for the community. And so like, it seems like the, the Vancouver Housing Authority direction allows this leveraging and so potentially getting more money for the money that we're putting in. And I'm wondering if that's a possibility for RFP projects as well or if that really only exists in this VHA concept because of their size and their longevity.
So Michael, I don't see why that couldn't be part of the proposal. I think that they have to be very clear that they're making that request, they're asking for multi-year funding. And then the urban county policy board would have to score that and make a recommendation for approval for that. Isn't that correct, Michael?
That, that is correct. And, and I apologize that I misunderstood the question a little bit. Currently, proposals, generally what we ask for in our proposals is that they start, you know, construction development start within two years and be completed within five years. And, and I think I, I would be very reluctant to move away from that for a couple of reasons. One, one is I want us, I would want us to be as consistent as possible with what we require in our other funding sources. It makes it a lot easier when it comes time for accounting and audit and stuff like that. The auditors know what they're looking at. They, like, you know, they, you know, they, they look for irregularities and what's different and it just complicates things more. But more importantly than that is less so within the case of the housing authority, more so with nonprofit providers. Projects and developments that take multiple years to develop are riskier in terms of the funding. You know, things change over, over years. So if a proposal's made that's like, we're not going to be developing this for the next three years, by the time construction starts, what is possible to be developed might be completely different from what was, the proposal was accepted and scored highly with to start with. You know, so it really is in the interests of public funds in general to, as much as possible, rank highly and fund projects that are as close to shovel ready as possible, as opposed to being the first in, in a, a, building the financial structure to fund a project. And, you know, with these amounts that we're talking about, you know, $400,000 a year, even if you banked it for three years, I mean, you're still talking 1.2 million dollars. That is not a lot, you know, like, that's not a lot of money. For example, I believe the REACH Isabella Court Phase Two, which is about 49 units, that was, that was over $12 million to construct. So, you know, this will be a very, very small piece of a, of a broader financing puzzle. And if you try to build an RFA this designed to allow that building out into the future, you're really not going to, like, what you end up with might uh, you're really not going to, like, what you end up with might look very, very differently from what you originally approved.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Counselor Medge.
Thank you. So most of the questions that Counselor Lance just asked were my questions as well. And I I would like to get the money out, and it is, it's never going to be a huge amount. It's new money, so we don't have the internal processes uh to dedicate it to any particular way. We always talked about Vancouver Housing or our bonding opportunities to make the money uh more valuable to us in the long run. You know, ultimately, as Michael said, this uh minimum amount of money uh probably will be limited to restoration work or something like that. I'd rather get the money out but not commit it for 20 years. I I I'd like to uh give this a little bit more time for uh Michael and Vanessa, and 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 I want to hear from the Urban uh Board as to if we have any county opportunities in the future for this money. But I would like the Vancouver Housing Authority to at least get it this year um as an initial rollout. And then we could reconsider that if we want to make a commitment for, you know, for 20 years.
I I would agree. It seems to me that we talked early on about these funds and if there was any way to be able to coordinate with these smaller cities, et cetera. And we did talk about the Vancouver Housing Authority. That would give us our, we thought it may give us our, the biggest bang for our buck. And I would like to see the funds get out as well, too. Looks like they have an idea. These and and these are going to to unincorporate Clark County as well as the smaller cities that aren't collecting this or are aren't going to do it themselves. So I I think that this year that we should allow this. I think we need a very um detailed report, actually at the end of this year, about where these funds were used, how they were used exactly on which one of these projects. And then we could revisit the idea and and the Urban County Policy Board as well as far as, you know, how does it make sense? How how much competi, how much does the um UC PB add to competition? And and how can we use that? So um, I would say if if there's not objection to allowing Vancouver Housing Authority to to use these funds this year and then actually ask them for a report, a detailed report about how it was used, that 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 might be good for this year. So what are your thoughts on that, Counsel?
I would second that motion, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, are are, so are we um considering the whole $600,000 that we have right now? Or the or the $400,000, even though he would talked about that for 20 years?
I I think we're, I would say we're considering the whole amount this year.
I'd be supportive of transferring what's of what's uh currently available to VHA to get this money into the community and get it working. And I would just add, as far as the the report and the coming back, that I would hope we could coordinate the timing on this uh so that we can hear, perhaps we won't have passed a full year, but we can hear from a housing authority at a time that allows us to determine if we would go forward with RFP for the UCPB, so we can, we can weigh these a bit more equally.
So that is an amended second?
Sure.
Okay, I I would agree with that. I mean, we do want to give time uh so that we can, if if we choose to go a different direction, uh, to be able to smoothly do that and and quickly. Uh, so we have a mo, and a friendly amended amended motion and seconded. Well, actually, yeah, it's amended. Is that okay, Gary? I think you said yes.
You you missed my thumbs up. Yeah, that makes perfect sense on the timing aspect.
Okay, and uh so, uh, is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Vanessa and Michael, for your time on this. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chair.
Uh, yes.
This is Mark Gasway. Um, can I just get, could I get just clarification on on what you just proposed? Because the amount available currently is is, I think, a little different than you might think. Could could we get clarification that that's the amount available as of the first of this year? Because we collect this every month.
Is that the Counsel's pleasure, the first of this year? I see head nodding without objection. Let's do it at the first of this year.
Madam Chair, Mark, do you have that amount? What is it as of?
Yeah, that's the $600,000 amount that we're discussing. I just want to make sure that that the the time period and the amount is correct, because that's, that makes a difference, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I support that.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mark. I appreciate that clarification. So it is as of uh, the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, moving on then to new business. 2.1 Fleet Life Cycle and Utilization Policy.
That will be removed from today's council meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And will be brought back for a future discussion.
Oh, all right, sorry. I guess I didn't get the the newest amended Council. I think I got about three of them, but um, okay, Counselor Reports.
Uh, if I could start, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
And it's, it's not based on any committee meetings, but I I did have an initial conversation with the Battleground Mayor regarding the YMCA initiative. And uh, he is uh really strongly advocating that we do, in fact, have kind of a preliminary meeting before the joint uh council meeting. And and he had many reasons for wanting to do that. Uh, so um, between the Chair and I and whoever else the Chair thinks to keep the number down, uh, I I would advocate that we do uh have that initial meeting. Additionally, um, I've got some inquiries about uh this proposed initiative on the Cedars Conservation Effort, where that's at, and whether or not uh the that would be a location that the YMCA would be would be interested in. But but as we look forward to a joint um council meeting, I I would uh just report that uh the Mayor really wants to have a smaller meeting uh quietly first, just to see if we do have common ground to move forward with the Joint Committee.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll get that um um scheduled. So, other Counselor Reports? Uh, Chair, I would like to uh tell you about Workforce Southwest Washington, which met last week. And uh, one of the programs that they have among many is called NEXT, which is a program that helps young people from ages 16 to 24 with holistic support for education and training and now uh taking their GED. That this uh NEXT program is going to begin its reopening for in-person services. So I think we'll be seeing a lot of uh good uh work that they're doing in the community differently, and I think even more helpful when it's in person. Um, then CREDC had a meeting last week as well. Um, and uh, there was um some interesting backup uh background material for um why it's so important to do uh workforce development. And one of the data points that they presented was uh that there are about 80,600 students in P through 12 grades now. And those young people will be positioning themselves for jobs, some of them in the not-too-distant future. And then you add to that, the, they estimate on uh above 98,000, which is a very high number, of our regular employees who work outside of Clark County, not just across the bridge in in Oregon paying taxes, that's a smaller number, but some in in other counties within Washington. So adding those two pieces together, it surely makes a need for emphasis on workforce development. Um, and then uh they reported that they have uh five recruitment projects that are in process at uh this time, and uh 35 that are growth management projects that they are working on. So it is, there's a long road ahead to provide the jobs in Clark County that we will need. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. Okay. If there was more on, I'm sorry, if I, if I'm jumping the gun here, and we're not, we're not.
I I was just gonna, I was just gonna mention that we received emails that uh CREDC um sent uh with regard to short rail, uh, the short rail uh ordinance, as well as they have signed on to the Buildable Lands model, letter that the BIA and others sent. So I I just wanted to mention that in the context of CREDC. Okay, Counselor Lance?
Uh, last week had the meeting of the Council of Governments for the Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities of Southwest Washington. Not a lot to report. Things are going well there. It's a really well-run organization. Uh, longtime Director, uh, David Kelly retired recently, and Mike Reardon is the new director. And uh, the staff is fantastic there. Mike is continuing a tradition of of excellence, uh, bringing these services to our community. There were some some small adjustments in policies regarding regarding some funding things, but really just about making things more efficient and allowing them to to better do their jobs. As a, just a a point of interest, um, I I think it's always interesting to see how uh decision-making bodies make decisions. And the Area Agency uses an interesting form uh called a SOPADA, which is S-O-P-P-A-D-A in our world of acronyms. And uh, it's basically just a short, it's like our staff reports, but a little shorthand, where they give you the subject, objective, the present situation, the proposed situation, the advantages and the disadvantages, and then the requested action. And it's just a very concise way to get uh the the meat of the information quickly uh so that the, you know, the the board of us from from different counties in Southwest Washington can all um process the information quickly and and hopefully make a good decision based on that input. So I just thought I'd share that. I think it's always interesting to see how others uh function. This isn't a report, but I did send an email, like, just like as our uh meetings were starting this morning. I'm not sure if uh this email only came to me or if all of us got it. When we're not all copied, we don't know. But we received a request for a proclamation um that I uh, we don't have to decide on this week because they're looking for naming, I'm trying to bring it up here now. They're looking for naming April 30th uh National Therapy Animal Day. And it's a national organization that is seeking this, and they're going to cities and counties and trying to get it. So I forwarded that to you and just wanted to talk about it as opposed to have an email about it. We don't need to review it today, probably haven't had a chance to read it. But perhaps we can, um, you can take a look at it, and we can see if it's something for the county to do and talk about it next week.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I I didn't receive that uh email separately. I did receive the one from Counselor Lance, did read it, and I would be interested in moving it forward as well. It's certainly a worthwhile movement across the nation and that supports not only veterans, uh, but all people uh in all manner of 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 situations. So I I do support it. Obviously, it needs to be rewritten on behalf of the county. Uh, that one was focused on Ridgefield.
Okay, um, next, uh, any other reports? I'll give a report. I uh am on the Board of North Country, not North County, North Country EMS, because it includes more than just Clark County. At any rate, they, um, as we normally do, we do all the financials and everything. But they are moving ahead as long as we have the okay from Washdaw and Clark County Roads to build a facility for ambulances, et cetera, that is in a different location than, and is, it's an um addition to uh their facility. And uh, they're gonna, we, we are waiting for that report. But the the entire uh committee did uh give unanimous consent to go ahead and go forward. We've talked with the architect, they've reduced the size of it so, in order to reduce the cost. So um, we'll be having a more protected ambulance situation in North Country. Okay, any other reports?
Madam Chair. I uh, sorry, I um, I forgot something because I was so focused on making sure that I remembered those other two things. Um, I was uh just appointed uh through WASAC to the Washington State Board of Health. Um, so I'm uh really excited about that and uh looking forward to serving in that capacity um as a representative for counties. There's also a representative for cities, and there's some other uh health official and medical and community representation on that State Board of Health. My first meeting with them will be in a couple of weeks, and I had my orientation yesterday. And one of the things that I discussed with the Director is they're very interested in continuing um stronger relationships with local boards of health to help um build that stronger relationship at the state level. But um, looking forward to serving.
Great, do us proud.
I'll do my best.
Okay. Other other reports?
Madam Chair. Counselors. Just since I came up and you asked, um, I can give just a brief update on the Urban County Policy Board, our last meeting. Uh, we actually, prior to that meeting, there's a whole ranking process. It's fairly detailed in terms of how the applicants are reviewed. So it's through this program called Neighborly. So each of the members of the Board ranks these projects based on a point system. So uh, we awarded and the Board awarded, and we'll we'll see it officially, I think, Michael said, in May as a Counsel to approve these awards. But um, total CDVG funds, uh, we awarded $1.1 million. Total home home funds, we awarded $488,000. We also had some additional COVID funding. Battleground has a um, the project uh for a rehabilitation center project they've been asking for. We originally recommended $688,000 to that particular project, but because we had additional funds available, we awarded them um $1.087 million for that project. So um, that'll be coming to the Board uh for approval. But um, it's a, it's a process where those those RFPs go out, the the Board receives sort of addition, initial information on those, and then we go through a very, very lengthy process to rank those projects.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any work session requests?
There are no work session requests this week.
Okay, uh, policy report, Lindsey.
So two things, um, following up on Counselor Medgey on the Battleground Aquatics. So um, I received an email, or Kristen, rather, received an email from um Erin Erdman regarding setting up this joint County Council, City Council meeting. And so um, if we wanted to get something at least scheduled so we would have it on the schedule, uh, even if we're going to do the smaller group, um, she did note that not all of the counselors are available during the day, all of the Battleground City counselors. And so if we wanted to have a meeting with uh the entire Battleground City Council, it would need to be after 5:30 in the evening. So it's possible we could do this as part of one of our evening meetings, where you can already have an evening set aside, that we could do something at 5:30. It would, wouldn't give you much time before the six o'clock start. Um, but that would be an option, or we could choose another day. I wanted to see if if you wanted to do it in the evening or what your pleasure was on that.
I think it might be wait, wise to wait until the, after the smaller meeting myself, to even schedule it. What's your pleasure, Gary?
Well, I'm open as long as we don't um overburden one of our uh public hearings in the evening and and it doesn't conflict with our uh participation in the RTC. But but I I'm fine with, um, I mean, this will be a long process. I'm fine with just having this initial a cursory meeting, informal meeting, and then uh and then scheduling a broader meeting, assuming everyone still wants to move forward.
Okay, why don't we do that then?
Okay, sounds good. The other topic that I had uh for this morning is we do have our delegation meeting on Friday with the legislators. Uh, we are coming up against sign and die, so we have two more meetings scheduled this Friday and next Friday. Um, so Josh and I are planning on talking about the budgets. Uh, the capital budgets were released recently. Um, we, of course, we've seen the transportation budgets. We've talked about those and the operating budgets as well. So um, talking about priorities within that, hopefully getting an update from them on where we're at with a potential transportation package, uh revenue package. Um, there's discussions that it may happen. There's discussions it may not. There's discussions that they may come back later in the year. So uh, hopefully getting some more definitive information from them. Um, and then also talk about, talking about the public health funding uh and that component within the budget and particularly as it relates to eleven fifty-two. So those are the things that we can have on our tentative list. But I wanted to see um from you if there's anything else you wanted to add or anything on that list you want to take off.
Council? I hear crickets.
I don't have a question about the content, but do we, who is, who was in the last meeting and who's up for the next one? Um, I will check with Kristen and make sure I send out an email to everybody. Thanks.
You know, I I've missed them all, and I feel slightly, but but I have the WASAC competing legislative update. And so I, I'm going to continue with that, so I'm really not available with.
Well, that starts, uh, Gary, that starts, ours starts at eleven-thirty and is often fi- finished by noon, or you can leave by noon. I don't mean to overburden you, but it, we can't have more than two councillors anyway. Um, councillor Bowerman, were you on it last time?
I was there last time, yes.
So then it would be councillor Medgee's turn this time would be up, but if not, then it would uh move to councillor Lentz.
Uh, we, we can confirm, but my understanding was last week was District Four, and councillor Bowerman filled in for councillor Medgee. So this week will be District One. Councillor Lentz.
Okay, great.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are going to uh adjourn our council time and go into executive session for three potential litigations uh for fifty-five zero minutes and one pending litigation for twenty minutes. That's an hour and ten minutes. There will be no required action after. So, thank you. I will see you on the other side. We'll leave this. Uh, we'll adjourn this meeting and we will go into executive session on another uh Zoom or WebEx. Thank you.
Any, any brief break in between?
Yeah, go ahead and uh take five minutes.
Okay, thank you.